Just says EMA. Okay, I guess we're above ready. Do I have to give this information? Right, but first. No more email or phone in? Right, but I'm talking about public comments.
Yes, you can invite if there's any callers, you don't see any anyway. But you can have, if somebody's calling in, you can take their comments. Otherwise, they need to be in person. If there weren't any emails before the meeting, we don't publish that.
Alright, so when I... For citizens' comments, do I announce that?
If there's callers.
That would be the time. Okay. Okay. Alright, so. Who do I get the signal to? Christina?
This conference will now be recorded.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for August 16th, 2021. Please be advised, the city council meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format, with the ability for the public to connect virtually if they so wish. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Christel?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. A notice was received by a member of the public body in accordance with the city council's electronic attendance policy, and that member will be deemed authorized to attend unless there's a motion to prevent that attendance. Is there such a motion? Seeing none, welcome Alderman Anderson. Okay, he is considered to be part of the meeting this evening. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Party of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think our new treasurer was not able to make it again tonight. She is the treasurer, we just have to go through the formality of the squaring in, so we'll make sure that happens at another time. We do have an EMA presentation on tornado alerts. We thought there was some confusion in the community about exactly what is being notified by the sirens and all that good stuff, so we have Michael Spain here this evening, our head of the EMA, to give us an idea of what's important to listen to when we're concerned about bad weather. Welcome, Michael.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council, for affording me a few minutes to address the questions as far as siren policies and/or procedures. So what I wish to do is really go through three sections. Number one, the definitions between what a fire, or for, I'm sorry, my background's fire, what an emergency weather watch is versus an emergency weather warning. Then from there, I want to wish to go through the policy, through DuPage County Homeland Security, DUCOM, as well as ours, and then bring in what our current response triggers are that we have established for any type of gathering, small, larger, or medium. And lastly, I'll entertain any questions. First of all, when we look at it, what's a watch? It just simply means that a watch, by definition, is issued when conditions are favorable for hazardous weather, weather, or non-precipitation hazard to develop, but its occurrence, location, and/or timing is still uncertain. Where does that come from? It comes from NOAA, which is the Northern Oceanic Alliance for Weather. They will alert us when inclement weather has the potential due to the atmosphere that we're dealing with. From there, as time progresses on, the atmosphere becomes very sensitive to high winds, to damaging hail, and/or to potential for severe harm to property and/or person. So then we go into what's called a warning. It's issued when hazardous weather is occurring, is intimate, or has a high possibility of occurrence, warning its use in conditions that are a threat to life and/or property. What this means is through that, is that we've had confirmed through weather watchers, confirmed through NOAA, confirmed through all... Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe to pull it up a little more.
Or I should shrink. Okay.
There we go.
Thank you. So when the weather conditions are vulnerable to life, property, and it has been cited, typically what happens is when a warning, the atmospheric pressure has established within 75 miles from here, and/or 120 minutes, because the average severe weather tornado can move anywhere from 22 miles an hour to 45 miles an hour. As we know, given that, its unpredictability, it can go either way, straight, north, south. It's not going to go west, because it's coming from the west, and then it's going to head east. So with that being said, the policy at that point is through DUCOM, Homeland Security contacts DUCOM, saying that our intel is stating that within DuPage County, we're hearing from other counties that there's a potential storm coming that has been cited. It's not speculation now, it's citing. So at that point, they go through a complete algorithm as to should the sirens be put into place, or should they not be put into place? This is a controversy that many people grapple with. What has come out at least 30 minutes before a storm is going to hit after it's been cited, the sirens should be sounded. When that means that when the sirens are sounded, that people in the affected area should take shelter. They should go to their basements, they should go away from any type of flying debris, windows, anything of that nature. Obviously, many people want to look at it, that's not the right thing to do. So given that, what has happened is DUCOM set off the sirens about a week ago for all of DuPage County. They felt the necessity to warn all of DuPage County. Now, the time they set it off, it was in Kane County. It was heading east at about 40 miles an hour, down Route 64 or North Avenue. Again, as we know, that's a projected algorithm that it's going to continue that way. But what happens is due to different parametric pressures, et cetera, it can veer one way or the other. So at that particular point, for, that this was coming, DUCOM, in cooperation with DuPage Homeland Security, set off the alarms. So when the alarms go off, people should take shelter. Now, it's a recurrence. It can be set up either every three minutes or every five minutes for the siren to continue. At that point, once NOAA, once Department of Homeland Security, as well as DUCOM has found it necessary that either the imminent destruction has passed, in fact, it will stop the sirens. It will not do an all-clear. The system is not equipped to do that. But what is equipped is the recommendation, and per our policy in Warrenville, is to go to the local channels. Turn to your radio, as far as NOAA is concerned, to find out in fact just what's happening. That is real-time information. So it'll give people the indication at that point whether it is safe to come out of the shelter, or if they do need to continue. But the Weather Channel typically will give an all-clear. Given that, in Warrenville, if we were isolated and we had what's called a microburst, what a microburst is, is the conditions, there has been a sighting of a tornado touchdown. At that point, a microburst can skip from house to house, community to community, and it's called a microburst. It happens very quickly, comes out of the sky, touches down, can be anywhere from destruction of three to five minutes will happen, just in that isolated area. In Warrenville, per the policy, it's myself and/or the highest-ranking police officer is able to set the sirens off. But at this point, what would happen is to step above that, I would contact my counterparts through the Police Department. My assumption is they would contact the city administrator to make the warning before, so everyone understands just what's happening. Now, with that being said, we've set up what's called response triggers. Response triggers are through the emergency services. Should a situation weather-related occur, the activation for our community between the Police Department, between the Fire District, and between Public Works has got a very robust and organized process. Same thing for EMA. When we call, we get the help. This originated, and I can use fire, this originated from the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, which, thank goodness, in the state of Illinois is the most robust defined system in the country. People come to us to emulate what we've done. It's joined, ILEAS has joined with the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, as well as Department of Public Works, as well as EMA. So we're all pretty much under IEMA, which comes out of downstate in Springfield. We're all coveted underneath this process. It's a preset process, so there's no subject to interpretation. So given that, what we've done, we've already set it up. It's been in concert with Police Department, Public Works, and the Fire District, as well as EMA. Given that, for the future, I think we know, and I'm not a meteorologist, I have no idea a lot of times what's going to happen, but in fact, what is being disseminated to us is that, given the frequency of global warming, et cetera, the potential for future incidents that can cause damage, whether it be a tornado, we're not going to get hit by a hurricane, but anything of that nature is actually on the forefront. But we are preparing for that. At this point, I'd entertain any questions from anyone.
Great, thank you, Michael. Questions? Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that information. It's always good to, it always changes, so thank you very much. Here's the things that go through my mind. So you said those sirens go off four, three minutes, and five minutes, or the...
No, and I'm glad the clarification. It goes off in sequence of either three minutes or five minutes.
And does it continue to do that with a break, or it's just going to happen one time?
No, it continues on until the situation is neutralized.
Okay, so if a person stops hearing the siren, because some people may not have access or have power out and they can't do a tele, whatever. If you stop hearing the siren, then can you sort of relax a little bit and say, at least the warning has stopped, maybe the watch continues, but that the warning for the area you're in has expired or gone away, or...
That's a safe assumption, to what you're saying. It was when the sirens stopped in the repetitiveness, then in fact, yes, it's a safe, safe to say that. That you can, the situation has passed, and we're in the process of returning to normalcy. So they can come out of the basement.
Okay. Okay. You may not be able to answer this, maybe the city administrator. So what is the policy, once there's a warning? We obviously took, I'm thinking the last week, we took cover, which was great. And then we thought about closing the meeting. What's our criteria? Is there an ordinance, or a rule, or just a suggestion from NOAA or something that you just... I'm just confused about when the sirens stop. Can we go back to normal?
Sure.
I'm just unclear, that's all.
Okay.
Thanks.
In terms of, I would echo what our EMA coordinator is saying and the advice, if you hear the sirens, take shelter in the lower level, which some of us were in this room when the siren first went off, and I said, "We've got to go downstairs." And there's some tornado safety areas down there. In terms of, and I wasn't actually current on the protocol of once the siren has stopped in this area, that that is basically an all-clear, because at the same time, it's a slightly different thing. Our cell phones kept getting these pop-up emergency messages that were saying, "There's danger, take cover immediately." So we were getting kind of the double tag team. But in terms of canceling a meeting, there isn't a protocol or a policy here, and that's why I was quickly talking to our chairman, Alderman Berry, and we were calling the mayor, because this is all started shortly after 6:30, and the meeting was supposed to start up here at 7:00. We wanted to try to figure out, should we wait for the all-clear, have the meeting? What do we do with the public coming here? We didn't want to lock the doors and have some unfortunate person caught in a storm that might be happening. And we're also in the lower level, so you can't hear the sirens at that point, because we're in a safe area. So there isn't a clear protocol, that's why we had to quickly make a decision. And in my 23 years, we've never had, I don't remember a meeting actually being canceled for weather. I remember back in the day, we had one during a blizzard. And it was the old building, it was a long time ago, different mayor too. And I've never had one where the emergency popped up right a half an hour within the timeframe for the meeting, so I can't answer that any clearer, except you really have to make a quick decision based on what seems to be going on, the conditions and safety of the people that are here, and the public that might be coming there. And unfortunately, we had some residents walking up to the meeting as we were canceling it. So that's, I think, the best we can do in that circumstance. We didn't anticipate, there had been a siren or a warning at 5:30 that was supposed to expire at 6:30, and at 6:30, a new one came up and the sirens went off, so that's the best I can tell you.
Yeah, I think the right decisions were made, I do. I just, it's interesting to then have your information, because the questions go through your mind. And I did not know about the siren, if you should, on and off, so that was great information. And so I think we all progress when we get more information. But yeah, I think, I think it went exactly as it was supposed to go on Monday night. I just always have these questions, like, oh, what... So anyway, and what if you don't have a phone, and what if you don't have a television, and that kind of stuff? So thank you very much.
To the city administrators' point, he did the right thing, or whoever made the decision was the right thing. And just be aware that a warning can go off, and then we could talk about microbursts can come down, and the warning can go back on. This is not an absolute. But the early warning system that we have, the level of sophistication is the best around at this point. It's much better than many years ago.
Alderman Goodman?
John sort of preempted my question, which is, what about the alerts on the phones that we were all getting? You know, for instance, my phone went off, my mother's phone went off, but my husband's phone didn't go off, my dad's phone didn't go off. It was very confusing, and they don't seem to quite match. It was 45 minutes before the sirens went off. So we didn't quite understand if it was really an alert for us, or what was causing the emergency alert on the phone, or do you need to opt in? Is there some app my dad needs to download that he doesn't have on his phone?
Actually, at this point, there is a NOAA app that you can download. I think that there is a cost associated with it. It's nominal on a monthly basis. But NOAA does have an app that you can download. The Weather Channel, I know, comes with most phones. I know it came with my iPhone, but I'm not exactly sure with the drone phones or whatever else is out there. That's a pretty good indication that you can use, would be the Weather Channel.
Well, the Weather Channel app just had us as a severe thunderstorm watch, and yet I was getting this tornado warning, you know, alarm going off, actually making noise on my phone. So those two things didn't agree at the time.
To the point, DuPage County sent that off, alerting everyone. Where I live at, I was actually working at my other job, and my wife was home with my dog, and she said the same thing, "Oh, my gosh, we have to go." And I'm sitting there looking at it going, "No, you don't need to, but if you feel necessary, go to the basement." They set it off globally, because I think you know what happened, I want to say a month, month and a half ago, I could be wrong on the time. When it hit Naperville, or missed us, hit Naperville, then jumped over.
In June.
So it's not an absolute, but what we found, to err on the side of safety is the best, to give people enough time, if they're on their way home, to get home, get out of your car. That's the worst place to be. Get to a safe place, such as city administrator said. What do we do? Close the doors here, people are coming. The best thing to be is in a shelter such as this, should something happen. So to answer your question, I don't know why your phone went off, when it did. I don't know why your husband's phone didn't go off. But I can tell you what I use as NOAA, and that's real-time. But before, there's many phases and checks and balances before the siren is sounded by DuPage County. Same thing is here with us. It's not just a, "Oh, gosh, I think." There's got to be concrete evidence of what's happening.
Okay. Thank you. It's a mystery.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Wilson?
I think this is appropriate, just to bring this up, because the circumstances that we do have the warnings that are here. Well, we have a family cottage in Michigan, and they don't have the warnings up there at all. And no one up there, was that we were not there. But we had what I would call a microburst that hit our lake and knocked down almost every tree that we have on our property. Trees are huge. One of them happened, unfortunately, happened to land on the house next to us. Our house was not damaged, but there was no warning, because there is no warning up there in the suburbs of Sturgis, Michigan.
True.
So, and fortunately, no one in any of the areas on our lake were hurt, but the damage was pretty extensive, particularly in our place. And we had trees that had 10-foot-wide dunks on it, and now it's lying down. So be careful, and when you hear the siren, do what you need to do to be safe. Like, again, no one was hurt up there, but there's an awful lot of damage that could have been happened.
To your point, I've done consulting in Michigan on this very thing, between fire departments and EMA. It's a cost to put the sirens up. It's a cost to maintain them. And it's a cost that the places that I was at in Michigan have felt that it was not necessary. And I can tell you, from my experience, I was at Katrina in a command situation, and we not only had Katrina hit, but we had a following hurricane coming that we had to prepare for. So that made me a believer, to be very candid with you, with early warning systems.
I agree. My warning is just pay attention to it, because it can do an awful lot of damage to an awful lot of people. Don't ignore it whenever it happens. Thank you very much for the presentation, Michael.
Okay, anyone else? Great presentation, good questions. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're a little better prepared now for what might happen.
Well, we're, this is an ongoing process, and as time progresses, what we have now may change in the near future, which is good, because we're going to stay on top of it. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the part of our meeting relegated to citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seabird.
Bob Seabird Albright Court, for the past two months, the city council has hidden information from the citizens. I suggest that you review the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone that has a citizen's comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just a comment again about last week's committee of the whole meeting. Last week's Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the whole meeting was canceled due to a tornado warning in place for the city through 7:30 PM that evening. For the safety of the council, the staff, and the public, the meeting was canceled, and all items for discussion were transferred to tonight's city council meeting agenda. So we've lost no consideration of items, they will be considered this evening. One other thing, formerly known as Cop on a Rooftop, this year's Coffee for Champions event will be held on Friday, August 20th, from 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM at both local Dunkin' Donuts locations. Warrenville police officers will be stationed outside each location, ready to accept donations on behalf of the Special Olympics Illinois. And it's always been a very successful event here in Warrenville. We've done very well with contributions to that cause. So keep that in mind, August 20th, 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Stop by Dunkin', I just have to say donuts, because that's what we've always said. Eat the place in Warrenville and make a donation to the Special Olympics via our police department. That's all I have this evening. Clerk?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Treasurer's not here yet. Alderman, questions or comments? Alderman Goodman?
Just one comment about summer days, which we haven't really had a chance to thank all the volunteers in the Park District for running a great event. And I guess it was two weekends ago now. Anyway, I think this is the first meeting since then, and the weather turned out to be lovely despite some ominous signs. And, you know, I think a safe and fun time was had by all.
I agree, it was a wonderful event again. Anyone else?
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Alderman Anderson?
I just wanted to echo Alderman Goodman's comments. It was my first summer days. My wife and I went up, were enjoying a meal and a beverage, and listening to the band, having so much fun, started calling friends, saying, "Hey, you really should come to this and set off a daisy chain," as they then invited somebody else, and then their kids came, and then their kids invited their friends. And so just well done by everybody involved.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Okay, city administrator.
Thank you. Just a reminder, reiterate, the Health Department has asked that municipalities share information about COVID-19. I know everybody's tired of this whole virus. I certainly am. The pandemic's been going on forever, and it's sadly not over. They have issued new concerns, because the numbers are rising in DuPage County. If you look on the map, we're now in the red zone again, along with most of the county and much of the country, unfortunately. There's many, many reasons this is a nasty virus that keeps mutating and changing. But one of the problems present is that while DuPage is sixty-one percent plus fully vaccinated, there's still a lot of people that are not vaccinated, and they provide, I'm going to use layman's terms, hosts that this virus can actually jump to. And apparently now, we can even, vaccinated people like myself can even carry it, that can transmit to other people. If you're waiting for something, new information, whatever, there's about one hundred and sixty million people in the country already vaccinated. We're doing mostly. Some people have had a few problems, but a very, 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 very few. We're doing well. There's a lot of science and information behind it. So if you're waiting for something, I'm going to tell you, if you want to listen to me, now's the time. If you haven't got vaccinated, go get vaccinated. But as I said a couple weeks ago, talk to your doctor. You got to trust your physician, your personal care doctors. Go talk to them. You don't have to listen to all the media, to me, to the government, ever. Talk to your doctor, because they can give you advice on it, and I'm, I'm certain they're going to tell you it's a, it's a good idea, unless you have some health issues, that it would be a problem. And that's a very, very small number, as I understand, anyway. There's also children that cannot be vaccinated yet, anyone under twelve, and all the kids under five and under are probably not going to be able to be vaccinated for a long, long time yet. So I think it's really an obligation as a citizen of a populated area to do what we can to protect all those people, and that includes the whole population. So please do what you can, and talk to your doctor if you're not sure or you're confused about. There's a lot of mixed messages in the public and the media. I understand that, but I would encourage everyone who can be to get vaccinated, and let's get through this thing, not have any more shutdowns, and get rid of these stupid masks, and move back to life. Thank you.
I think you said what we're all thinking up here, John. Thank you. City attorney, Brooke?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to just give a little bit more information about something I hope all the senior staff and elected officials of the city have already received an email about, but it's our, Alrod Friedman has put on a seminar every other year. This is, would be the sixteenth year, so that's thirty-two years of seminars. Normally, we time the seminar to take place right after the municipal elections, so that newly elected officials can participate. And usually, one of the seminar sessions is focused on newly elected officials, so it's kind of, we call it Municipal Law 101. Talks about FOIA and Open Meetings Act and, and other sort of intro topics. This year, it was postponed because of COVID, obviously. We kind of decided to separate the seminar into two parts. The first part was an entirely virtual program. It's a taped presentation, and that's still available. So that was geared toward, again, newly elected officials. It was sort of an intro to sort of basic municipal law topics. So if anyone, I don't think Warrenville had the opportunity to do that. So if anyone is interested, it's not only for newly elected officials, it can be for anyone. Some of our clients' municipalities just had everybody do it as kind of a refresher. But feel free to reach out to John or me if, if that's something you're interested in, we can get that set up. It's taped again, so it's really easy to do. The second part, which is the bulk of it, is scheduled for November 5th of this year, and it's going to take place in our new office, which is at the Reed Murdoch Center downtown on the river. It takes place at a different time, at a different place every seminar. So it's not normally downtown, so this is the downtown version. And it's a full-day seminar. There's breakfast in the morning, and the seminar goes from 10:00 to 5:00. So it's packed full of just all different kinds of topics, including, obviously, our agenda's not set perfectly yet, but I'm including, you know, trends in suburban development post-COVID, other legislative updates and Springfield updates. And there usually is sort of a municipal law two-oh, or one-oh-two, or two-oh-one, how you want to talk about it, but basically, an advanced course for more elected officials or senior staff that have had more experience. And I will just note that it's both well-attended by elected officials and by senior staff and, and other staff members as necessary. I think Community Development Director Mensah came last time, so you can ask him about how it was. But, so I just want to encourage all of you to come. It's, there's also cocktails afterwards. Dozens of municipalities and their staffs and elected officials come, so it's just a really neat time to talk to a lot of other police chiefs, or development directors, or finance directors. There's a ton of people there, and it's, it's a good and informative time. So please reach out to me if you have any questions or want any more information. And just on the COVID topic, of course, we are carefully and thoughtfully considering all of that as time moves on. So we will make any updates as necessary about COVID policies for the seminar.
Great. Thank you, Brooke. I'll talk about this again later on the agenda. City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to emphasize that is in the packet at the end. I don't know if everyone's still going to, after all the items on tonight's agenda, how excited you'd be about talking about it, but the information is in there. I will tell you, I'm already committed to going to the seminar. The last time, two years ago, Mayor and I were down in Springfield with the MMC, which we're on the board, and we couldn't make it, and it was disappointing, but I know some of our staff attended. But I will be going, senior staff will be going, and probably some other staff as well. So likely taking public transportation, because I hate driving in rush hour. Done it too many times, and I can sit in my own parking lot or driveway. I don't have to sit in traffic. Anyway, so I'd encourage any Alderman that want to go, we'll talk about maybe coordinating getting there, and I would encourage you all to attend if you're interested.
Thanks, John. I will certainly plan on attending myself. Okay, we're on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the August 16th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Any changes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have a set of minutes that also need to be approved. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the August 2nd, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Goodman. Any discussion of those minutes? Alderman Wilson?
Yes, I will not be voting on the approved admittance of the August 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting, because I was not absent at, I mean, I was not present at that meeting.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? And one abstention. Okay, motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 0202-1-33, amending the authorized strength ordinance to add the Assistant Community Development Director position and remove the Senior Planner position. B, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Aaron Schultz to fill the Plant Commission Ward III vacancy for a term expiring January 4th, 2026. C, receive and file minutes of the Police Pension Board meeting held on April 27th, 2021. D, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on May 11th, 2021. E, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on June 8th, 2021. F, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on July 13th, 2021. G, receive and file report of invoices paid up to August 11th, 2021, in the amount of $36,744.86. H, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before September 6th, 2021, in the amount of $134,986.10. And I, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of July 2021, in the amount of $10,126.34.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second. Motion, and a second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the consent agenda is approved. Thank you, Clerk. We'll move on to the regular agenda, item 7A. Would someone like to make that motion, so we can discuss it? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Plan Work Group recommendation and approve the updated Capital Maintenance and Replacement Plan.
Second.
Second by Alderman Goodman. Motion, and a second. We'll have a presentation by Public Works Director Kukler. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you, and good evening. City Council approved the original CMRP document in September 2011, and that plan has proven to be a pretty good plan to this point. The inventory of city assets was very comprehensive. The total revenue projections made at the time were very accurate, have proven to be pretty accurate, although they've remained fairly flat over time. The one glaring admission staff discovered in recent history was the, there's no annual escalator incorporated into it, so the costs in the plan, for the most part, are the same costs that were there in 2011. So same, the asphalt cost, concrete cost, and that kind of stuff. In recent years, this has become, causing a bigger gap between the actual costs of construction and replacement versus the 2011 costs. And that disparity and the lack of growth in revenues has, were the primary reasons for reconvening the CMRP work group. The, if you may recall, Alderman Christel and Alderman Widener were assigned to work with city staff on this update, and one of the first things staff performed was an update of that asset schedule and the costs associated with replacement of the various items. After comparing that to the average revenues, there's approximately an eighty, $880,000 hole per year to fill, or for revenues versus expenses. The work group's recommending several changes to revenues for the, for the CMRP, and Kevin Dolstrand is going to cover that in the next agenda item. But there are, there were several, there are a couple of other recommendations that staff, I'm sorry, the work group is recommending. One is using the 10-year average municipal cost index to increase the asset values annually. It's the same, this is the same cost index that staff currently uses for the EMRP and also for the, the surcharge costs for the sewer and water projections. And this will help the plan keep the expenses in the plan keep up with the rising costs over time. And additionally, staff created an appendix H, which is a new appendix, and that's a five-year look ahead for capital expenses. And that includes not just CMRP expenses, but MFT and general fund expenses, basically the non-enterprise fund expenses. And that should give Finance Department and staff a good look ahead at the cash flow in the plan, based on the revenues that are projected for the next five years, as well as the expenses. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. I'd like to give Alderman Christel and Widener an opportunity, because they were on the work group, to say anything they'd like to say before we open for discussion. Alderman Widener?
Well, we deliberated over these suggestions for many hours and several meetings, and we had very reasonable discussions, and there are some creative solutions are included as part of this. And I think it'll go a long way to providing the necessary funds for the CMRP in the, in the future.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Christel?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that's, I assure you that we turned over every rock that we could, and threw all kinds of ideas out there, and I think we came up with a pretty good list of, of good ones that we can move forward with. So I think we did a good job.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Oh, Alderman Widener again, please?
Yeah, I just think, I'd like to express appreciation for, for staff for, again, once again, providing all the backup and research that made decisions easy to, easier to decide upon. So they did an awful lot of work to bring this, bring this forward, and I appreciate all the staff's efforts.
Thank you. Okay, other Alderman with questions or comments? Alderman Goodman?
I only have a couple. I think on the whole, this is a really great document. I can tell how much work went into it, and I really appreciate the effort by the CMRP work group to do all this. I know what goes into a project like this. My first question is whether Director Kukler can talk a little bit about some of the funding categories that are funded at less than 100%, and what that means when you have funding in a plan like this? Because I don't know if all the other Aldermen have worked with asset categories funded at less than 100% and understand what that means for the long-term lifecycle of some of these assets.
There are some items that, well, there's one, the buildings, for instance, are not funded at all in the CMRP. The maintenance of the buildings are, so like the HVAC systems, systems are funded, you know, carpet, things like that are funded, but the replacement of the building is not funded in the CMRP. And the thought behind that is that the next generation, the current generation paid for the city hall, for instance, and the idea is this building's going to last 50 years or however, you know, decades. And the next generation, when they decide to make the, to replace city hall, because it's worn out, or whatever the reason would be, that, that generation would then find a way to fund the replacement of the city hall. Our storm sewer system is funded at 20% if memory serves, and that's, again, it's a, the asset that we've, we've anticipated is going to be a 100-year lifecycle, because those pipes last for a long time. Where we start to notice deterioration in the storm sewer system, for instance, might be in the catch basins and inlets more than anything else, where you've got, the salt really attacks the concrete, and then those, those items will be replaced with the road program. But overall, we're not replacing, doing a full-scale replacement of the storm sewer system, because by and large, it's going to last for a really long time. So again, 100 years after the storm sewer, storm sewer is installed, you might find a, find that sections need to be replaced, maybe, maybe the rainfall events are getting larger and larger, you need to convey more water through them. So at that point in time, again, that, the full-scale replacement would be decided upon by that current generation to undertake that and figure out a way to fund it. So those are two examples of, like, funding something at less than 100% or not funding it at all in the CMRP.
Okay. And, and in practical terms, that often means borrowing, right? You, you have to have debt to fund things that you haven't saved up the money for. And this plan is about saving up the money for some things, but not absolutely everything.
Correct.
Okay. My second question just has to do with it, it says several times in this policy that things with a useful life estimated at over 70 years are not funded at 100%. It's, it's phrased as an absolute thing, but I think that might need to be corrected, because there are some exceptions. There are a couple of things like the Cerny Park Pavilion and the gazebo, which are funded at 100%, but their useful life here is 75. So I think just the, the three or four places I found where it said any asset with a lifetime of 70 years is not funded at 100%. That's just not accurate, so maybe we should edit this document just a little bit.
Sure.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a clarifying question. I'm not sure what I'm voting on. There are three, there are three actions here, three ideas that have been proposed. Those same ideas are brought up in number two, item number two. And so I'm confused for exactly where we're voting for these things. So, so I'm not in favor of all of these three things on page, well, there's a little page numbers. Oh, two of three. But it's also brought up in item number two. So I don't know where to voice my concerns, here or in the next section. So exactly, let's just start here. Exactly, number one, point, item number one, what are we voting for exactly?
In item 7A.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Right.
Or, or F, number one. I mean, when I read the motion, it's, it's just not clear exactly what I am saying.
I think the, the idea for item 7A would be to I think the the idea for item 7A would be to approve the work recommendation to actually update the capital maintenance and replacement plan. And then we go into the detail of what possibly could be included in that updating.
In number two.
Right. In terms of the finances of where that money would come from.
So I'm not really voting for these three things on page two to three.
No, not yet.
Got it. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else with a question or comment? All right, let's do a roll call. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Christian.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to 7B and get into the weeds a little bit. Would someone like to make that motion? Alderman Widener.
A move to or motion to accept the long-range financial planning and capital maintenance and replacement plan work group's recommendation and authorize staff to include in future budgets increases in the annual transfers from the hotel tax fund to the capital maintenance and replacement fund to $350,000 for fiscal year 2023 and $400,000 for fiscal year 2024 and beyond.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Again, let's go back to the to the folks that worked on the work group and ask for their observations on where we're at there. Alderman Widener, would you like to add anything to the mix before we have a presentation by Kevin Dollstrand?
Nothing that I haven't already signed. You know, this is a well-thought-out plan and it was supported and researched thoroughly by by staff.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Alderman Christian.
Yeah, nothing further on this one.
Okay. We may call on you later for some support and we have questions about stuff. Thank you. Okay. Finance Director Dollstrand, you're up. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation you're considering came from both the capital maintenance and replacement work group as long as the as well as the long-range financial planning work group. The two groups have been working on the long-term financial health of the city, looking at their specific pieces of our overall equation. The the idea to increase the capital maintenance replacement funding from hotel motor was obviously discussed in both groups. And it was the recommendation of both groups that that the funding be increased incrementally for 2023 to $350,000. The current amount is $300,000 per year. And then beginning in 2024, that amount would increase again, but up to up to $400,000. The hotel tax fund is slowly working its way back. We've got two months of revenue we have received so far for this fiscal year. If it were to stay on the trend, 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 it will now, which at this point, we have no way to know for sure one way or the other. But it would actually return to where the revenues were in late fiscal 18. So we have a way, way, ways to go and we don't have a lot of of revenue to base it on yet at this point. But it is making a recovery, a recovery and a little quicker than we had initially thought. So this does seem to us to be a stable recommendation moving forward. And of course, we can always revisit this and will revisit this annually as part of the budget as well to see that even if you do approve this tonight, if there's any sort of adjustment to that that might need to be made.
Okay. So this particular item is one item to help the revenue source for the CMRP.
Correct.
That would be additional money from hotel motel tax.
Correct.
Nothing else is included in this item, just this one thing?
Correct. Not in this specific item.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? Alderman Goodman?
Just one comment, which I don't think was stated explicitly. You know, it was 300,000 before. So this is not a huge change. It's not like we're going from zero to 350,000.
Correct.
Going from 300,000 to 350,000 to 400,000.
Correct.
And when we were initially having these conversations, I believe you came to the long-range financial planning work group with a request from the CMRP work group about changing it to 400,000. And Alderman Wilson had the idea of phasing it in more gradually to see how the hotels recover because 350,000 was about the amount of revenue that the hotel fund got in an entire fiscal year. It was it was way down. And so if that was the amount of money coming in, we didn't feel comfortable committing more than that going out for this purpose. So it seemed like a reasonable intermediate step. And I think it's a a good long-term recommendation. If the fund does recover, we'll be able to pay the 400,000 each year. But obviously, every year when the budget is passed, is that he can look at that number and the Alderman can change it at that time.
Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Alderman Anderson, yeah, please speak up because I sometimes forget to look at my screen.
No problem. So this is not new money. We're not raising any rates. So this additional 50,000 would have been traditionally going somewhere else. Could you just educate us on on who would not be receiving this money as it's going into this fund?
At this point, it would have just stayed in the fund balance, in that fund for use in future years. So it would not have gone anywhere else. It's not like we're taking it from anywhere else. It would have stayed in this fund as the fund balance. And then annually, when we review the budget, it could have come up as a recommendation then to use it for a purpose we normally would use in that fund.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, I just, I don't know why I need clarification here. And I think to start off, I just, on page two, you start out by saying the result is a projected average annual expenditure of 2,741 or two, I'm sorry, 2,741,882 dollars. So and that's an average. And I talked to you a little bit about this. We haven't really spent that much. I mean, I I only have data from, I went back to the budgets, back to 2017. And if and if I look at those, it's it's over $2 million each time. Now, this year's is different and the pandemic has done that. So we actually have this surplus of 34,000. But that's a pretty bizarre year and we cut back expenditures. And I I understand all of that. I'm just saying, is 2,741,000 approximately, it seems like high to me. And I hate to be funding for a number that may not be realistic. But obviously, you must think it's realistic or you wouldn't, and all your experience would not have written that down.
We do. And you have to remember that this is a long-term plan.
Right.
Going over many years. Those are the average annual expenditures. We have not hit those most years. We don't hit the the average, which allows us then to build up the funds in that fund to fund those things in future years when we do need to use them. So we're not trying to fund this all in one year. It's funding the plan over the long term so that in, I'll make up a number. So in in 10 years, when we need to do a certain set of curbs, the money is there to do that. Or if in five years, we have to replace certain vehicles, we funded that based on this plan and that money will be in the plan to do that. So it's funding it long-term, not year to year.
So it's a forecast, what your forecast is going forward?
Absolutely.
Okay. So and I'm looking at our budget we just passed in March. So there, beginning that, there was a 1,073,000 approximately dollar surplus. And we have a surplus at the end of that budget also of an ending balance of 1,107,000. So we're basically trying to beef up that surplus. Is that really what this?
The goal is not to beef up the surplus. The goal is to fund the long-term plan. And since we don't spend it all every year, it allows that fund balance to build up until we do need to use it.
Right. So obviously, we're not comfortable with the $1 million. It's not going to carry us, not going to be enough each year to compensate for the difference between revenues and expenditures. So you're, we're trying to get that higher so that we can each year not be in a deficit.
That makes sense.
Yes, but remember, you're not funding year to year. You're funding the long-term plan.
Right.
So that in any year, when we do our budgeting and we project that for fiscal 2023, I don't know the number yet, I'm going to just make one up. So we decide that for 2023, we need to use 2,400,000. That when that comes, we've got the funding available to do that. And then we don't do that again for another five years. We built that fund balance up again that then allows us to do it in that year. So we're funding it long-term. We're not trying to fund every year with the plan the way it is. Because we're not going to the full expenditure of the of the plan every year.
And to do that and have that $1 million surplus or and we need to look at that 2,700,000 number?
Hmm.
Okay. Okay. Now, the only thing I have a question about left is, so I I I see what money could be generated by the plan. And I see there's utility tax from these developments. But do we ever think about excess property tax being a source? I know excess, I'm not talking about TIF deals, I'm talking about developments that aren't They will be generating property tax and there's a lot to use. It'll go in the general fund, right? And there's a lot, who knows? But has it ever been the city's experience to say, our fund that's really hurting these days is the CMRP? Can some of that, was that a council decision or a staff or can some of that, and I can't tell you the amount and it's just an idea and I just need to clarify, be directed toward this list of ideas, not just the utility tax?
Absolutely. It would be an item that the long-range financial planning work group could absolutely discuss as an as an option that may help fund this plan as well. There are other things on the horizon that I think would help with this as well as we just, one of the things that that we've discussed would be cannabis revenue, which the group would recommend all go into the CMRP. At this point, obviously, we don't know what that would be. But that would, all that would go, 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 go into their recommendation that we make were to be approved. So that would be another source that would go into there as well. If you hear what the state, the state says, the revenue from that continues to grow. So that would be a good source to go into the CMRP. And getting back to your original point, we could absolutely discuss property taxes, but it's not anything that we've considered at this point so far.
It's a little early. They won't be generated, you know, it's going to be years before we actually see them.
Understand.
And the last thing is, are there been discussions either with the committee? I'm still, this American Rescue money keeps coming back to me all the time, what the plan is. And I know, because it's happening this year, this 1.8 million or close to. And I know we don't have a plan for that. I'm not really, I understand. But gosh, infrastructure to me, we had to cut way back because of the pandemic, would be a source to be beefing up that end-of-year balance. So the reason I'm asking these questions is I'm opposed to this gas tax. And so I'm just trying to make sure I understand everything else as I consider my vote. And one of those would be, and I know you probably can't answer it alone, but why are we never considering this money in some of the things that we're doing now? Or do we just have to wait and see or will it all be dumped in the general fund and then who knows? But it's, I know the gas tax is not a lot of money, but, and as we talked, other people will be paying it, not just Warrenville. But I'm still, I want to make sure I've exhausted every single thing I can think of before I vote for a tax increase. And this is the last question about the 1.8 million. Is there any possibility that a chunk of that can go into the losses that were generated in the CMRP? Or is that absolutely an impossible question?
I'm going to turn that to City Administrator Coakley first.
Let me jump in on that and then I'll back up because I'd like to comment on the property tax question as well. The Long Range Financial Planning Work Group, and I think Kevin was just about to say this, just in our last meeting last week, just a few days ago, had discussed that. Because we finally, the state of Illinois finally requested the money and has, will will be receiving the money. And so now we have certainty about the amount of money we will receive for Warrenville in approximate timeframe. Kevin almost immediately applied for our allocation. So within, I don't know, we're counting on the state. I call Kevin every day and the first thing he says when I talk to him on the phone, no matter what my call is about, he says, we haven't got the money yet. And then I ask him, do we get the money yet? So we're monitoring it. We will let everybody know. He said, I will be the second person to know and then we'll share it with all of you. There will be 800 and some, about 60,000, 860,000 that we should get for this first year. And then also next year, about the same timeframe. I'm speculating it'll be sometime in September, just knowing the state doesn't move fast here. Anyway, Long Range Financial Planning Work Group is formulating a recommendation, which we will come out with at one of the next couple of committee, the whole meetings. I think it'll be September, the fourth meeting, Public Safety and Finance, and discuss that. We are looking at infrastructure. I'll tell you, I don't want to jump ahead of them too much here, but we're looking at infrastructure, but more on the water and sewer utility side, given the EMRP issues. But we're looking at different ways, I can tell you, to allocate different parts of that money. So we're not going just one basket. The other part of that, though, is for the CMRP, in in terms of EMRP or CMRP, you want to look at with that kind of money, it's a one-time big infusion of money, which, you know, we all paid those taxes in, so we're getting some of that money back. Great. But you want to look at it for non-recurring expenses. We would not want to use it ever for operating expenses to pay salaries or something that's recurring. And I would strongly recommend we do it for one-time projects, whether it's CMRP, EMRP or anything else, not for planning it for building up fund balance for long-term use of the CMRP because it will be spent. It will be spent within the timeframe we have to spend it in. We have a couple of years to actually spend it. And then it will be gone. It will be invested in, and I think the council will make a good decision to invest it wisely. But I wouldn't count on it as recurring revenues here. So whatever pocket it goes in, I anticipate it probably won't end up being recommended for CMRP. So we're still going to be short, even if some money was allocated there as a long-term point. And what the CMRP work group was looking at, and you'll notice at the end, bottom line there, we haven't reached for all 800 and some thousand that were short because we didn't want to overtax or overbuild up revenue for that fund. We're looking at what reasonable recommendations for revenue, expecting that cannabis will probably come in eventually. We have a qualified eligible vendor who has all their zoning approvals, just needs to get one of those licenses they can't seem to give out to state again. And there's some other things and possibly video gaming, which comes up later on the agenda. Those all start to fill that hole in different pieces. There's not a one-size-fits-all or some really high recommended tax. If I may, going back for a second on property taxes, certainly can look at anything. It is always ultimately a council decision to make on how you allocate those revenues. But you want to parse out all the new development that is exciting in town that's going on. You'd want to look at what's not in the TIF district, which is in Cantera primarily. And when you get to our nine-point-something percent of that tax bill, they're paying a lot in taxes. We also have, you know, services that they'll be paying part of public works and for our police and some other things for the city. So I'm going to speculate Kevin could crunch numbers on it, but I don't think there's going to be enough left to really make a difference for the CMRP at that point. We can always look at anything someone wants to look at, but from my experience with our low tax rate relative to all the the total tax bill, I don't think that's going to be enough money to really make a difference there for the other things that aren't regular maintenance for our lights and all that thing. You're correct. Utility taxes will be paid, there'll be more of those from all the new residents in town. All those people have lights and heats and air conditioning, thank goodness, for our revenue standpoint. We're going to try to capture those increases as well. But there's still a hole that just inflation. And just every time there's a new development, the city takes on a few more sidewalks, a few more streetlights, cul-de-sac here, a few hundred feet of sidewalk to thousands of feet of sidewalk pathways, whatever it is, that's the nature of being an incorporated city. I'm getting way beyond the initial questions, I realize, but there's a lot of those things that that group has taken a lot of time. And I really appreciate the Aldermen's input that have sat through the CMRP meetings. And then again, on the long-range financial planning, they talk about these things because they're not day-to-day exciting items and they are willing to grind through and give input on them. But I've answered those questions that I'm rambling on now, so I will stop. Thank you. But I've answered those questions that I'm rambling on now, so I will stop. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I too think they've done an amazing job. This is not for the faint of heart. I just want raising taxes to be the last thing we do, as opposed to the first thing. And I'm trying to figure that out in my mind. And that's where I'm struggling, and that's why I'm asking some of these sort of on-the-edge questions to just kinda help me. So, so thanks for that input.
Alderman Berry?
As I look at this, these recommendations, basically, the first item in the hotel tax fund is, is really, it's not a burden on our citizens unless they're living in a hotel, or staying in the hotels in Warrenville. This is basically for people who come from out of town and visit here, and do business here. And that's actually who is paying in that fund. The electricity tax is from new developments. And the state shared is what we would normally get. We would get something from the state. We don't know about the video gaming as of yet. So basically, what we're asking for an increase is a four percent, or a four cent to a six cent per gallon tax on gasoline. That's the only tax, task that we're asking our citizens to pay if they buy gas in our town.
Okay, and that's the next agenda item.
Right. But I mean, is that what you're looking at, Alderman Davalos? I'm not quite sure where you're saying that all this tax is coming from.
No, it's the gas tax. It's not the rest. Oh, no, no, it's the gas tax. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this, except at one point. Which I have to figure out how to resolve here. But it's, it's the gas tax, and you pay it over and over, and Illinois is notorious, you know, for high gas taxes. And that's not our fault exactly, but, you know, it's worse than Wisconsin, it's worse than Missouri where I just was. And those people are saying, "Get your gas anywhere but Illinois." And so I'm just sitting here in this environment thinking, yikes. Is there any other way we can accept all of this and not do that? That's what I'm saying. This is a great plan, actually. Really well thought out. I'm just...
My only issue is, is that this is, this is going to change. More cars are becoming electric. And we're not gonna see this tax for very long. I mean, how many car, how many advertisements do you see on television nowadays, and it's, it's all electric cars? And so, this actually, are we gonna make $200,000 every year? Maybe not. Maybe not. Maybe we're gonna have to find another source, because some, more people are going to buy electric cars. That's just the way it's gonna go. It's just like solar energy. Less and less people use Commonwealth Edison. So, I mean, I don't think this is going to be a big thing from now on. Cars are becoming more efficient also. Also, the government has demanded that happen. So I don't think this is going to be a huge burden on our residents.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
I, I would agree with what Alderman Berry said. Raising taxes was certainly not the first thing we thought of. It's, you know, this long list of many other things that we're trying to do to, to bind the money elsewhere. You know, I think raising taxes was more like ninth, but, you know, that's, I suppose, not exactly what you meant. But, but I, I still think it's responsive to your concerns. The other thing that I would say was that when we, perhaps not Alderman Davalos, but about four other aldermen who are still on this council with me, were on this council in 2011, when we adopted the CMRP in the first place. And at that point, we did have to institute new taxes to raise about $1 million a year for the first time, including the gas tax, which didn't exist before that point. And I remember for the first couple of years after it began, every time we would ask Finance Director Dolstron about how the CMRP was, was working in the early stages, he said he, he didn't know if the revenue that we had received to date was going to be stable or not, was going to meet the needs of the plan or not, was going to be enough to cover what we knew our expenses would be, and that we were gonna have to revisit this. And the fact that it's been 10 years since we really revisited this, I think, shows number one, that we did a pretty good job the first time. But number two, we always knew that this was coming, and that the amount of that revenue, sorry, was gonna have to be adjusted over time with the expenses that we could predict we would need to pay, and depending upon how those revenue streams changed over time. Now, back in 2011, we had a lot of conversations about picking revenue streams that we thought would be pretty stable over time, because to fund a plan that's long-term, as the administrator said, you want stable revenue that's recurring every year, and that can be relied on to build up the fund balance. You don't want one-time cash infusions. So I think what we did with our initial version of this plan, and what we're doing now with the revised version, is an update to reflect the changing conditions, the changing prices, putting in the escalator that Director Kukler talked about, which wasn't in the original plan, putting in new revenue to replace some revenue sources that maybe didn't perform as well as we'd hoped. One very good example in the CMRP is the telecommunications tax. Everybody's cutting their landlines. And that has trended down for about 20 years, I think, is what Finance Director Dolstron said. You know, gradually, so we've still been able to use a lot of that revenue for this plan, but it's not going back up. So binding other new revenues to replace that lost revenue was always inevitable. And I think while Alderman Berry is correct that most of these other taxes come, taxes, fees, financing from the state, you know, shared video gaming revenue if we move forward with that later tonight. You know, a lot of those things might not fall on residents the way that a gas tax does. One thing that you could keep in mind is that a lot of people who drive through the roads in Warrenville, and who may not live or work here, buy gas in our communities, and that means they're using our roads. And those are the right people then to pay for the maintenance of those roads. And so when you're talking about matching up a, a revenue stream with a city expense, it's a very appropriate one. That the people who are buying gas in town are mostly the ones, think about all the trucks going to the Amazon warehouse that are filling up at Thornton's right now, that are very heavy trucks, driving on Warrenville roads, and buying gas in our town, and paying some gas taxes to us for the damage that they're doing to the roads over time and the wear and tear. And it's a very appropriate way to raise these funds. And I think, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes ever. And when you need to do so, as, as Kevin pointed out, you know, we're, we're hoping for funding here that's gonna be a little over $610,000 a year. We know our shortfall is more than that. It's about $800,000 a year. But as Kevin said, for the first two years of the CMRP, we don't know exactly how these funding streams are gonna look over time. And maybe it'll turn out better than we think. And we certainly don't wanna overtax people. So we're starting low. And we know right now, we're gonna have to revise this again, just like we knew 10 years ago. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Very quickly, this is exactly the discussion that I was hoping to be part of, because I was so on the fence. And two things quickly. I've always felt the CMRP was totally brilliant, was if, you know, if the school district just did this, we'd have a lot less problems. So I think it's brilliant, and I'm supportive of it. And you are not the only person, Alderman Goodman, to talk about the Amazon trucks to me. So it's very, I, I, I think, yeah, I, I can support this. I really can, because the other ideas are great, and I think we have to do it. And I really just wanted to hear what everybody else on the council said, and you guys are great. So I appreciate that input and the time, and I'm, I got the information I needed. Thank you.
All right. Well, we've pretty well discussed item C. Let's go back to item B. I would just make one observation, that I would hesitate to refer to the fund balance in the CMRP as a surplus at any point, because it is not a surplus. It is, as Kevin tried to point out a couple of times, this is a long-term plan. Some years, we will spend very little, and every once in a while, there's gonna be a big expense. And the whole idea of the CMRP is to be ready for that big expense. So sometimes it will look like that fund is very, is flourishing, has a lot of money, but that money's already earmarked somewhere down the road. So keep that in mind. There's never a surplus in the CMRP. It's all money that's earmarked at some point to be spent. Some years, we're gonna say, "Wow, we're really doing well. That looks flush." Other years, it's gonna be empty, and we're gonna say we've got to build it up again. But that's the nature of the plan. Is that a fair statement, Kevin?
It is absolutely a fair statement, and that was the whole goal of the plan from the beginning.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question on item 7B? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick points. You know, the gas stations are strategically placed near the transport and warehouse center. So I think that very much came into our vision when we were proposing the, the tax. And I think everyone in this room, all the elected officials and staff certainly, are proud to have a balanced budget. And this kind of thinking helps us to be a pay-as-you-go entity, not, not a surplus entity, but it allows us to keep the lights on and to do some additional planning and some creative things in our community, but not be spendthrifts. And I think we're different in this regard, because of this type of planning, than many other municipalities that go year by year. And I, I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there and say that, that this allows us to be a pay-as-you-go community, this kind of effort.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, we're back to 7B again. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, on to item 7C. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Long Range Financial Planning and Capital Maintenance and Replacement Plan Work Group's recommendation and direct staff to work with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to increase the city's local motor fuel tax from four cents per gallon to six cents per gallon to support annual capital maintenance and replacement work.
Second.
Second. Alderman Berry, any additional comments on this particular one? It seems to me we've already been over it quite...
Mayor, one question?
Yes, Alderman Anderson?
I didn't see in the, the remarks, any, can we provide any benchmarks of our tax rate relative to our peers in local communities?
Kevin, that would be for you.
We can provide that information to you from the most recent survey done by the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. I do not have it handy, but we can certainly provide that to you.
Any, so we'll look at the facts, but I did just curious, do we know we're high, we're low? We've always been around in the middle? Any thought there?
I'm gonna try to see if I can pop one open right now. Hold on just a second for me.
While I was pulling that up, I did appreciate the previous comments of the correlation of this tax with the use. I, I think that's, one of my earlier questions was going to be, what other taxes do we, do we consider? None of us really want to do this, but that correlation that was brought up earlier, I thought was a compelling point.
Thank you, Alderman. City Administrator Cokely with something?
Thank you. Well, Finance Director Dolstron is pulling that information up. I'll just make a couple of comments. One is that not every town in this area, not every town in Illinois or in DuPage, has a motor fuel tax of their own. Number one, you have to be a home role community to do that. We are, and we can do that, so we don't have to rely on property taxes so much, or increase some other local taxes if we were non-home role. A number of communities around us though do have it, but not everyone. So when you're looking at that, it, it does make a difference. Some of the towns that don't have much higher levels of sales taxes, because they have a lot more retail than we do, they may also have a, for example, much higher property tax levy to generate more revenue. So it, it's a good benchmark, and, and we realize today that somebody's gonna ask that question. And we do have that information, and certainly can provide it in a more concise fashion before the council would vote on the actual ordinance. But I just wanna make it clear that it's not something where we can compare property tax rates. Everybody has a property tax, so we can start comparing that across towns. Sales tax type revenue that comes in, et cetera, those things from the state, not every town has that. DuPage County has a gasoline to motor fuel tax of their own. They recently, about a year ago, I believe doubled it. The state, of course, does. The federal government does. If you ever broke down your gasoline purchase, they don't show it on the bill when you pay for that at the pump, but there is a lot of taxes. The commodity we're actually buying is pales in comparison to the amount of taxes that we're paying. And those monies, federal, state, and local, county or city, go to infrastructure, grids and bridges and roads and all the things, just like we're doing. Kevin, I'm filling time here. Are you, do you have...
Well, it's like looking for a needle in a haystack. This thing is 32 pages is crammed onto, to here.
Let's, uh, can we do this in a precise fashion?
Yeah.
What he's looking for is a, all revenues, all taxes, all fees for all the communities in DuPage County, and it's on a spreadsheet that is little tiny font. I wonder how he was gonna do that in a hurry. It's got a column for motor fuel taxes, but it's not easy to follow popping that up. So if we could bring that back when we have this, if the council votes, then we'll bring it back with the...
Right, this is not the final vote. This is to give staff and the attorney the direction to prepare the ordinance. So when it comes back for a vote, we'll make sure that material's available for you.
Absolutely.
All right. We're all set there. Anyone else? Alderman Chrisell?
Yeah, just one additional comment, too, is, you know, when the group looked at this increase from four to six cents, you know, it obviously doesn't fill the entire hole. That wasn't the goal, right? We're taking small chunks of it. We felt as a group that this would give us a good opportunity to, to make up some ground here. So it wasn't about raising the taxes, you know, to make as much money as we could. We felt this was a fair, fair amount. So I just wanted to call that out.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
One last brief thought, which is that some communities assess their fees as a percentage of the gas price, which means that when the gas prices increase, their tax increases as well. And we have always opted to do it as a flat cent per gallon. So when gas prices are up, our tax revenue often goes down quite a bit, because people buy less gas. So when the information comes from staff, I would just wanna point that out, so you keep that in mind.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to item D. May I have a motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
I would like to make a motion to accept the Long Range Financial Planning Work Group recommendation and direct staff to continue accounting for the allocations of state-shared per capita cannabis revenue in the general fund, and to bring forward a recommendation on the potential redirection of state-shared per capita cannabis allocations to the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund if a recreational cannabis business opens within the city.
The second. Motion and the second. Kevin, explanation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna provide a little background. So beginning in March of 2020, we started to receive a per capita allocation from the state of cannabis revenue. Since March of 2020, we received, just, just, just short of $20,000, and that, and that's the combined total since March of 2020. The most recent IML revised estimates would have us receiving about $20,000 per year. Again, that's per capita. It's about a dollar and fifty-four cents. Since that started to come in March of 2020, that revenue has been booked into the general fund as just a miscellaneous revenue. The recommendation here is that if and when a cannabis business, a recreational cannibal cannabis business opens up here in town, that, that the tax relative to that, as well as the state-share tax, would then all be directed into funding the CMRP.
Okay, questions for Kevin on that? Hearing that? Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. On to item seven E. Now, I would ask for a motion for this. I hope you have in front of you the seven E memo that has a considerable amount of information on video gaming and some of the things that we may want to make changes to from the initial recommendation. But let's start out with a motion for this as it is worded, and then you can make adjustments. We'll go through each of these items and see if you want to make any changes to what's been presented. So if I could have a motion, please. Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and direct staff to work with the city attorney to revise the draft ordinance to allow video gaming as directed by city council majority, create a new liquor license classification with local restrictions, and present the revised ordinance at the September seventh, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Ashauer. Question?
Question. Thank you. In voting for this, are we voting for video gaming? If we're against video gaming, then we shouldn't vote for that. We should...
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Will there be more discussion on the video gaming?
That's the whole idea, is to go through some of these things and see if people want to make amendments to the motion.
Yeah, okay, fine. Okay, thank you.
The original motion gives us something to work from, and then we can work with that to determine what the council wants to do. But ultimately, at the end, if you vote now against, if the council says no video gaming, we don't have to go through the rest of the exercise because it's done. But if the council said votes for a majority, then we're gonna go through the details. So at this point, yes, you're voting either for video gaming or against it.
So is now the appropriate time to say something about that, or...
Sure. Why not?
I just have...
Absolutely.
So, no surprise, but I'm voting no, but I'm just... And just quickly, you guys have heard me talk about this before. You know, it isn't really video gaming. It's gambling. It's blackjack. It's video poker. It's slots. It's the whole thing. It's money. It's gambling. So that's my issue, and my issue has always, one of my issues has been, I know not Carroll Stream in our, but all the towns around us have chosen, and they have pandemic issues and financial issues, not to use this as a source of income. It actually isn't gonna be that big a source of income compared to the staff time between the finance director and how we've gotta do all this licensing to make sure, and the police have to check on Bean 21, and do they have the licenses, and all this kind of stuff. To me, there are just much better sources of income, and I don't consider it a pro-business proposition anyway. It is for the six businesses, but I think there's just other things going on here, and it seems like we're sort of digging the bottom of the barrel here. So I won't talk about it anymore because we have a lot to do tonight. But yeah, those are the reasons that I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Anyone else with a comment or question? Alderman Berry?
Well, I'm going to vote yes, and my reason is, yes, we're not going to get a whole lot of money out of this. And I don't expect that we ever will. I guess I would like to look out for some of these businesses who probably need this maybe additional help. And it's not just the residents that we have to look forward, or look out for in our town, but we also have to look out for the businesses also. So I know that some of these businesses have wanted this for quite a few years, and we told them no, and we've done that, I think, twice. So this time, I think that it's necessary that we maybe give them a leg up this time and help them out. And if it's not gonna help us that much, maybe that's okay. And that's my reason.
Okay. Alderman Goodman?
I'm gonna be voting against it, and I think my reasons are primarily twofold. First, I don't think that this is a very Warrenville kind of thing. None of the Warrenville residents that I've spoken to about this issue want to have slot machines in our movie theaters and restaurants here in Warrenville. I think the idea that it makes some businesses uncompetitive is a bit of a false argument because, you know, right now, the primary issue that's affecting all of our businesses is COVID, and other factors are, you know, very small by comparison, and that's often the case in any given business cycle. There's other factors that are gonna be a lot bigger than whether they're allowed to make a little money off a slot machine in the corner. You know, could every business back when I was young have had gumball machines in the corner and maybe raised some money from that? Maybe, but they didn't all have a gumball machine in the corner. Businesses choose what type of things they want to have in their businesses to reflect their community, to reflect the things that people in the community want, and the people that I've talked to in this community don't want slot machines around here. So that's the first reason. I do, however, think I'm gonna lose this vote, and so I want this ordinance to be as well crafted as possible and to have the details right in the law and to reflect, you know, the best version of this ordinance that we can make. So I'll have more comments when we discuss, you know, the various details, I suppose. The primary one being that it won't make our movie theater at a competitive disadvantage not to have slot machines if they don't want it, and no other movie theaters in the surrounding towns that we've been able to determine have it. So I feel like, you know, that particular drafting decision by the city attorney, you know, was a somewhat random choice, and it isn't the choice that we should make as a council, as a policy decision. So I think gambling is becoming more common. It's becoming more legal. There's gonna be sports betting at Wrigley Field, I think. And to me and to the people that I talk to, that's a sad day. So this might be coming to Warrenville, but I think this is a sad day. So that's all I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
I just want to talk about the fact that it isn't very often we are in a situation where we are creating a tax that is a choice tax. That isn't, doesn't affect every family, every child, everybody that drives a car, uses gas, uses natural gas, uses electric. This is something that people decide on their own if they're gonna participate in this revenue source. It's something that some people consider as a matter of enjoyment, just like the games that... Like going to the theater. The... We talk about how we don't want to raise the gas tax two cents on everybody, but we have a chance to provide a source of revenue that somebody's actually gonna decide to put their money in that machine and share it with us. I fully support this. I think it will help some of the businesses that have had a hard time. It'll make them more viable. It'd be better for the community. They can make upgrades that I see as good for the community. And there is no evidence of the negativity that was considered when we had gone through this exercise the first time. The... All the conversations, and thank you for the great research that you did. The... All the research shows that it's not a problem, and it can be a benefit in general to the community.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, we'll have a roll call then, please, on this item?
Sorry. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Nay.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, so let's look at some of the details then. We are, the council has approved the concept. If you look at your memo, number two, and the key decisions to be made, is there a consensus to reduce the proposed initial fee for a Class V license from two thousand to one thousand? So let's consider that. Is it, right now, it is two thousand, right, John? Is it the way it's written?
Correct.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to reduce that to one thousand, and then we could vote on that and see if that could be an amendment to the motion? Alderman Ashauer?
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the proposed initial fee.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Can I just clarify? This is, the motion's already been made and voted on, but this is at this point just providing consensus feedback for what we may do with the ordinance when we bring it back to council at a future date or at the next date.
Okay, so we're giving direction to the attorney and staff.
Yeah, and you can make a new motion, but that motion will not necessarily amend the first motion. It's just, if you want to make a motion and vote on it, that's fine, but it's just a new motion.
Okay, but we don't need to do that at this point, as long as we have consensus from tonight.
That's also fine. It doesn't need to be a voted item because we're not, it'll eventually be voted on formally when we present the ordinance.
Right, but some of these individual things might want to be reduced or changed beforehand. City Administrator Coakley is just about ready to burst here.
Well, the goal, my goal tonight is to get clear direction from a majority of the council, whether it's a show of hands, a vote, a motion, whatever. So each item that you wish to have changed in that draft ordinance, we can give that clear direction to the attorney and staff, and then we can bring back a clean ordinance for you to vote on on September seventh. So be it by a motion or direction, whatever it is, so that we know that it's not two Alderman want it, or three Alderman, or one Alderman. It's at least a majority of the council that wishes that specific change, so
I don't either.
I would encourage it. Probably best to have a motion and a formal vote, but whatever way we get clear direction, then we will do what you wish.
Okay, we will take these individual items and have a new motion for each one, so it's very clear what direction we're going in, okay? That way, we don't have to worry about consensus or not. The five votes will make the difference. So the first item to be continued, to be discussed, would someone like to make a motion concerning that items? To Alderman Ashauer, you were ready to do that?
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the initial fee for Class V liquor license from two thousand to one thousand dollars.
All right, is there a second?
It's Class V, not five. The letter V.
I'm sorry, what?
Class V.
Class V.
Yes, correct.
All right, motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, so it's Class V as in boy, or V? It's written V.
V as in Victor.
Okay, good, okay.
There was some confusion about whether or not it's a Roman numeral five.
So this doesn't have anything to do with video gaming, correct? This is not like per machine or anything? This is just to get your liquor license, right?
Well, I can clarify that. So basically, this is a liquor license. It's a liquor license you can only get if you already have another type of liquor license.
Okay, so it's a video gaming liquor license that we read about. Okay, okay.
This is an additional charge for an additional amenity or to your...
But it is for the business, not the, like, six times the gaming machines. It's not times six or whatever. It's for that business, no matter how many gambling machines they have.
Correct, and this is, when they say the initial fee, it means, you know, the initial, first time you get the license versus the renewal fee. So the first time you would get your Class V as in Victor license, the current draft is, the cost is two thousand dollars. So the motion is to reduce that fee from two thousand to one thousand. Okay.
Because I heard from somebody else that it was per machine, and it seemed like excessive. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Christel?
So this is different than the schedule we had looked at originally, right? We saw that there were differences in this Class V license and the cost. So now we're saying it's a flat rate?
It's two thousand dollars for the first application, and then it's written as a two thousand dollar fee per renewal every year, an annual fee.
Okay, the original, the actual liquor license is different per class, right?
Right, so if you have an A1 license versus a B, I'm speaking off the top of my head, but one of the other eligible license, those license fees may be different. But the Class V license will be the same regardless.
All right, thank you.
So this is an additional liquor license to one that you may already have in order to enable you to have the machines. Okay, does anyone understand that?
Can you repeat?
Sure, this is an additional liquor license on top of the one that you may already have that will enable you to have the machines. Okay, and the motion is to reduce the fee from two thousand to one thousand. Any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call on that, please?
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Nay.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson? Oh, I'm so sorry. I've lost track. Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
No, nay. Thank you.
So what's the tally? I lost track.
It was two nay.
Two nay, so we...
Three. I'm sorry, three.
So it's five to three. Okay, so that one is settled then. That number is reduced from two thousand to one thousand by a vote of five to three. Onto whether there's consensus in favor of adjusting the renewal fee for a Class V as in Victor liquor license from two thousand to one thousand. Would someone like to make that motion or a motion in favor of keeping it two thousand, whichever way you want to do it? Alderman Ashauer?
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the renewal fee for a Class V liquor license from two thousand to one thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Alderman Christel. Discussion. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that the whole reason this came up is because we were trying to bolster the CMRP. And by giving a fifty percent or half-price reduction, we were kind of reducing the amount of funds that we're providing to the CMRP. And it seems like if a business is gonna make forty thousand dollars a year, a two thousand dollar license fee is really less than ten percent of that total amount. And it makes sense for me to continue to try to bolster the CMRP, but yet also give the businesses an opportunity to make a little money. And I think a further reduction would not be the cause that we're looking for when we considered the fees for the city's purpose of bolstering the CMRP. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I guess I have a question for Management Analyst Youngmeyer, which is how this number was arrived at and how it compares to surrounding towns. I believe it was chosen because it was comparable to what most other towns were doing.
Yes, so if a community is a home role community, they can set the fee that they charge for an annual license. They can also make it, I think there's a question on if it was for the year or if it was per terminal. They can also charge per terminal per year, so if they do have... An option is if they do have six terminals, that fee would be for each terminal. So it is just based on what the community set as fair. And looking at what communities are currently charging, both Bartlett and Carroll Stream recently raised their fees, and I believe it's around a thousand now. So it does seem the thousand or two thousand is kind of what is seen around other communities. And, I mean, as you are considering this, if you look at the figures of what an establishment makes per year, it's, let me refer to a table. So...
Excuse me, I think you're not answering my question. You may be answering a different question.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're on the terminal fees item yet, which is item D and C? We're on item B?
Right.
In the, in the, in number two of the memo?
Right.
I think you may be skipping ahead.
Okay. It is up to the city on what they've based their fees, so... Okay. It is up to the city on what they've based their fees. So, how do we, I would say we're comparable to other cities in what we are charging.
I will say that additionally, the city considered, did quite a bit of research into the staff hours and staff time that would be devoted to the administration of this license application. The applications will probably end up being quite thorough and will need to be vetted. And so there's quite a lot of time...
I'm sorry, please, there's information being provided here that you're missing? Would you start again, please, Brooke?
Sure. I was just explaining that one of the considerations that was involved in the fee amount for the liquor license was both the city's existing experience with just liquor license administration in general. And this is really, you know, just a liquor license. So we have some experience, and you can look at the table of the other liquor licenses that have been imposed are not, many cases are more, much more than this. This is taking into consideration that obviously these businesses would already have a liquor license, and so some of that license administration would be duplicative. But of course, this license does include additional information, additional staff time to vet these applications. And so one of the major considerations for the amount of fee was related to the staff time and effort to process the application. And then, of course, afterwards, the administration of checking on licenses and making sure that the business is being operated in accordance with the city's ordinance.
Chief Tarano.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things we took into consideration with liquor licenses, liquor licenses in the background investigations we do, and I just wanted to make the council aware of this, whenever we do a background on a liquor license applicant, we have a detective spend about 40 hours of their time, which is a whole week. By the time that they call the person in, do the interview, review the application, corroborate all the statements that are made, run fingerprints, get documentation from the state and the FBI, go out and conduct interviews if they've run other businesses, it's a big investment that we make. So that is one of the reasons that that fee is structured the way it is.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Grishol?
Yeah, that's already been done, though, right, Chief? So they wouldn't do it again, or it wouldn't be as extensive the second time. Would that be a fair statement?
Well, it depends on if there was any ownership change, or if there was a management change of who's the person responsible for it, or if it was a brand-new business, then it may have to be done.
I would, Alderman Grishol, just to make a note, the way that the ordinance is drafted currently, you would need a liquor license for 12 months before being eligible for this license. So there is that intervening year time where they would need to update that background check-in. And of course, there's the renewal application, but there are additional considerations that would need to be reviewed and processed. And again, if you look at the liquor license table, many of the initial liquor license that you would need to have to be eligible for the class V license have fees well in excess of $1,000. So the fee was, that was taken into consideration, the idea that they'd already gone through the process initially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, for myself, I think the $2,000 seems reasonable, but that's my opinion. Alderman Berry?
I think the $2,000 for the renewal fee is fine. I didn't mind the $1,000 for the initial fee because these businesses, they're just trying this out. I mean, they might not go for it the second year. If they don't make the money that they thought they were going to make, they might not do a renewal. And for the first year, they, and if they do well, then they'll have the extra money to pay the $2,000. So it's up to them at that point. Let's see how they, how well they've done, that's up to them, whether they want to renew or whether they don't. So if they want to renew, then they're going to pay $2,000, but they get the initial break at the very beginning to see how this works for them. They might not like it, and if they don't, then they don't renew.
Okay, back to you, Alderman Grishol.
Yeah, just one last comment on that. I think how I kind of view it is, if we save the business $1,000 on the front, whether it's a renewal or an application, and they take that $1,000 and reinvest it into another terminal, that's additional income that's coming in every month. So I, that's kind of how I look at it. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, two questions. One, is the staff recommendation after reviewing everything that's been discussed, that they feel that $2,000 is competitive and fair, and that's why that was the original recommendation? And then, secondly, am I correct to assume our revenue from this, by and large, is going to be revenue, production revenue from the terminals being used? That this fee is a pretty nominal element of the overall financials of the program, is my impression.
Okay, City Administrator Coakley?
Yeah, I'll take both those, and somebody else can jump in. Answer the first question, yes. I believe that would be a fair, the $2,000 would be fair, based on what was just talked about, is it's lower than many of the current license fees, and it does apply to some of the additional work that would need to be done. Does seem to be reasonable. $1,000 would work, because we're talking right now about initially only allowing six entities that's in that draft ordinance. Maybe it'd be eight someday, but you multiply that out, $2,000, $1,000, it's not a material amount of money in terms of what we're talking about in the city budget, either way. It was more about covering the costs, and it is about also, as Alderman Widener said, looking at the shortfall in revenue, and if there's some revenue that can be reasonably raised, then that would contribute. But right now, if you drop it to $1,000, you're talking a reduction of $6,000 total.
Okay. I don't think you answered the second question.
I forgot the second question, I'm sorry.
Just confirming, the financial revenue from this is really from the use of terminals. It's not, it's not the fee.
Yes, absolutely, that is correct. The majority of the revenue that's projected, and you can see from the research, is all from the use in the gaming that goes on, not from the licensing fees.
Yeah, the fee is meant to cover the city's costs and administration of the program.
Right. And staff has determined that that's a reasonable fee, $2,000 to cover the costs. Okay, anyone else? Alderman Ashauer?
Just that by making the fees so high that they can't afford it and want to take the risk, I mean, first of all, this is for gambling. So there certainly is a gamble involved with the owner doing this, building the space for it, putting in the machines, paying the taxes associated with it. The, if you want to encourage the revenue source, you can't bleed it dry upfront.
Well, I think that was kind of covered with your first motion, will reduce the initial cost to $1,000. This is for renewals. So Alderman Berry made a good point in that if it's going well, then it makes, it makes sense to unload that cost instead of front-load it. I guess that's the way I would see it. We made a concession initially to let them give it a try. If it proves to be successful and they want to come back, it seems like that investment to cover the city's costs again for that renewal seems reasonable. So that would be my perspective, but I respect yours.
I guess the city's costs are initial. When we get to the second year, it's just taxing them. Because the, if I understood the chief correctly, there's not a review every year on the liquor licensees. The, if it's the same person, and they continue as a licensee, then there is not an additional investigation. Am I mistaken in that?
Chief?
No, if there's been no ownership change of the establishment, then there, it's just basically a review of the application that'd be submitted.
All right, Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I think there will be more costs. I think the police have got, just like with cigarettes and alcohol, they've got to go in there periodically, probably and check if there's any people below 21 in there. They have to, you know, I'm sure they're going to do drive-bys and things. And the city, what if you don't get the license paid? What if we have to follow up on all this stuff? I mean, there was a section in what the finance director's supposed to do, not just initially, but following this up every year. There will be costs to the city. And so I really think it's reasonable, I mean, we're making 5%, they're making 35%. So they're making seven times what we're making. I think this fee is a reasonable amount of money, this $2,000, considering what they're going to be making, and the work that we are definitely going to have to do. And there will be, there could be attorney issue. I mean, I don't know, but I think it's not zero to the city.
Okay, Alderman Goodman?
Can I call the question?
Sure. Pro-call, please.
Can we just, can we re-clarify the motion? This is to bring the $2,000 down to $1,000, is that correct?
Correct.
For the renewal?
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Widener?
Nay.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Nay.
Alderman Berry?
Nay.
Alderman Davalos?
Nay.
Alderman Grishol?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Wilson?
Nay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion fails. So that $2,000 remains the number, correct?
That's my interpretation.
Well, seems pretty clear to me. All right, onward and upward. A motion concerning the idea that the terminal operator will pay 100% of the annual video gaming terminal license fee. I have a motion on that, please.
Can I clarify something very quickly, Mayor?
Sure.
As the ordinance is currently written, it's the operator, which is the basically business that maintains and actually owns and maintains the machines themselves. It would not be the business owner in town, the bar or restaurant. The ordinance is currently written, because that was the direction originally given, that the terminal license fee, which is basically is sort of a business license fee, would be paid by that terminal operator, not by the restaurant or bar owner or operator. So this motion is fine. It's just if it, if there is consensus for the terminal operator to pay 100% of the video gaming terminal license fee, that would result in no change to the ordinance.
Okay, so currently, that's what it's in the ordinance to be, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion that I guess I would ask for is someone to move that the terminal operator pay 100% of the annual video gaming terminal license fee. That would be in accordance with what's already being presented. If you don't want to do that, then we can change it. So this is to confirm what's in the ordinance already.
Correct. Did you have a question, Alderman Berry?
Alderman Berry?
I just have a question. We're talking about initial fees. Is this the same thing? Is this annual video gaming terminal licensing fee? Is that the same thing as A and B?
No.
Okay, well, what is this amount?
So the difference is, the, in order to have, be able to have video gaming at your establishment, you would have to obtain this separate sort of subsidiary or ancillary liquor license. You would have to first already have one of the eligible license class licenses, and you would apply for the class V license, which would allow you to have video gaming at your liquor license establishment. The video gaming terminal license is a separate license that governs the terminal's operation themselves, the terminals themselves.
So it's a license on each terminal?
The way it's drafted now, no, it's not, John, just to clarify. It's, it's a single license, but the license would specify how many terminals that license covers. So when you apply, you would say, I am applying for four terminals. This is how, I mean, it can be done the other way, but this is how we determined to do it. Instead of issuing four separate licenses for each one of those terminals, you would get a single license that specifies it's for four terminals. So if you had six, and you have a license for four, you would be in violation. So you would need to, when you, when the operator applies for the license, they would have to apply for the number that they wanted to install at the location.
So the operator would have to come in and apply for a license, and not the business? The operator, the owner of the machine? Because basically, the owner, because basically, they're leasing it to the, they're leasing it basically to the, to the business.
The business, the state statute creates different types of licensees. The business that actually has the video gaming terminal in it is actually not one of them.
The owner.
Okay. One of the license categories is an operator, is the terminal operator, and they make an arrangement with the business to put the machines in their business.
Additional clarification from, who wants to take it over there?
I'll take it.
Assistant, City Administrator White.
Brooke, just a clarification on Section 332B. It looks like it's written as the annual license is $1,000 per terminal.
What's the number?
Yes, the fee is per, the fee goes up the number of terminals you have, but you're only issued a single license.
Got it, okay. I just want to make sure that was clear, because it sounded like...
So if you have one terminal, you pay $1,000. If you have four terminals, you pay $4,000.
But you still only get one license.
Right.
It's just the license fee increases depending on how many terminals you have.
And so you're not going to go in with a number, I'm going to have 10, because you'll have to pay $10,000 if you only have three?
Well, you can only have six.
Well, whatever. You know what I meant?
Yes.
Okay, and this, this particular motion now, if it's worded properly...
Yes, it's fine.
Is only, has to do with who pays that fee, the operator or the business owner? Alderman Widener?
In respect to what you just said, if we're wanting to give an advantage to the business owner in town, we would vote to have the terminal operator pay 100% of the annual video gaming terminal license fee. Is that correct?
Yes, in that the cost is not borne by the business owner. Of course, as Alderman Berry just pointed out, there may be a level of logistics involved, in the sense that you would need the terminal operator to pay for that license, sort of concurrently with your license application. So that may be a hassle, but the cost is not borne by the business owner.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
I just have a question. Do we have authority to designate who pays the fee? Can we restrict it to the terminal, not the owner, but whoever provides the terminal?
Ultimately, whoever walks in with a check that's of the right amount of money. I don't think that the city routinely checks to make sure that, you know, if a business is paying their regi, so the ordinance says that it's the responsibility of the terminal operator to get a license, and that that license, so therefore, they would pay the license fee. Now, if the business owner walked in with a single check to cover all of the fees, I don't know if the city would turn them away necessarily.
Well, just as long as we have the authority to dictate who goes, sure, okay.
City Administrator Coakley?
Just to add to that, Alderman Wilson, I would speculate that the video terminal operator could set up a deal with the establishment to require them to pay it.
Yeah.
So I think you, the attorney said, we can, the council, that we council, can set, designate whoever they want to have pay it in the ordinance, but in whoever actually ends up paying it is then beyond our control.
All right, Alderman Ashauer?
The, in early discussions regarding this, their, the concern was that the people who furnish the machines were installing, getting state licenses and installing machines in establishments without paying the local license. And it would seem like it would be easier to regulate that if we require the terminal provider to pay the license fee, and let them know that there would be a fine or some type of adjudication if they provided illegal machines that were not licensed.
When you say terminal provider, do you mean the business itself, like the bar or restaurant?
I'm sorry.
When you say terminal provider...
I'm not talking about the people that furnish the machines.
Yeah, I think that there's actually some, that may be, did you...
Well, I was just going to say, as the department that's going to administer this, I don't care who pays it, and I'm not going to know on the check who's who. As long as the per terminal fee gets paid, how they pay it is not, I'm not going to, I may not even have a way to determine that.
To get to your point about enforcement, I think that if the business owner in town was the one that was responsible for obtaining the license, from an enforcement perspective, it would be easier to enforce the rules against a business that's located in town, rather than a state or national company that's operating these terminals and just placing them, you know, it's a company that may be hard to track down, and we certainly can, but it's not as easy as a business that's located in town. So in evaluating this, that's one of the pros, that's one of the cons in having... in having the terminal operator be responsible for obtaining the terminal license, because it's a, it's a little more difficult to enforce the rules against that company. But, as you said, one of, you know, there's other considerations involved, other than simply enforcement, so.
Okay, did we actually get a motion made or not, or we're still discussing? Alderman Davalos?
Is this a yearly fee or just once?
It's an annual fee.
Okay, because there is something that was handed out memorandum about video gambling terminal license fees, and it looks like all the cities are doing different things. And, but you're saying that the state is telling you that it's what the amount is per machine?
No, the state is not giving us an amount for the, for the fee. The state has just created, the state issues video gaming licenses, and it issues different license classes. One of them is to a terminal operator. So, this terminal operator is the person, this is the company that owns the machines and installs them in the various businesses.
But we were saying it was $1,000, and yet this, this, sometimes it's $25 for some cities, or it's, it's $1,000 per machine, or 150 annual, so we could say anything, right? We could make up any amount we want.
They, you're right that the fees are all over the place, and yes, it's a determination about whether the city feels that these fees adequately fund what it will cost to administer this program. So, some municipalities have made the decision that they're going to, you know, and again, it depends on how hands-on you're going to be about reviewing the applications, enforcing the rules, inspecting businesses. Some municipalities may be in a free-for-all state where they're issuing the license and they don't care what happens, and it's really cheap to maintain the kind of program that way. So, you're right, the fees are all over the board. And so it's.
The question we're considering now is who's going to be responsible for that fee, whatever it may turn out to be.
Oh, we don't know yet what it is. See, I thought it was established that recommend $1,000 per machine.
Well, right now, the, the item that we're considering is just this 2C, which is consensus about who pays it.
Right.
Not the amount.
There's no amount involved in this particular question.
The next item is about the amount.
Right.
Okay.
So right now, we're trying to determine who would be responsible for the fee on paper. Again, as Kevin and others have pointed out, someone else might actually pay it. That could be a business decision made between the business and the operator, who knows? It doesn't matter, but we're trying to establish that at least somebody has the responsibility to make sure it gets paid. That's all, that's all we're talking about right here.
Right.
Who would be responsible, and if someone would like to make that motion, it would be the terminal operator. Alderman Berry?
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Or just a clarifying question.
It's okay, it's okay.
Under the video, this 33 dash, 3 dash, 3 dash 2, it says that the the terminal operator is defined by the Illinois code, blah, 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 must apply for and obtain a video gaming terminal license from the city that covers each video gaming terminal. So the terminal operator is the owner of the machine, and what are we calling the business?
The business.
Because, again, when, if you go down to B, that's, you know, that's the beginning part. If you go to B, it says the fee for the operation of the video gaming terminal with the city is establishment holding a V liquor license, an annual license fee, so. And so that's the establishment.
Yes, that makes sense.
Hereby imposed, the annual fee must be submitted by the video gaming terminal operator. So now you're saying that it has to be done by the video operator. Why are we forcing? Well, unless we're doing it because they own the machine, because.
They're going to profit from having that machine in the town, for sure.
Right, right.
This comes into play the most when someone doesn't do it. So if for some reason they haven't paid their fee, it's who's, who's responsible for paying the fee? Now, we wouldn't issue the license until they paid the fee, obviously, but this is just setting up, so there's no discrepancy between the business, you know, the property owner or operator and the terminal operator, whose responsibility it is to obtain this license.
So the problem then comes into if the owner of the machine, the operator, doesn't pay the fee, then how does the business know that it hasn't been paid?
Well, I think Kevin could, could comment that the way that this is written is that.
It has to renew it every year, though.
Well, we wouldn't renew the license, if, if the fee has not been paid.
You don't get your dog license unless you pay the money.
Right.
Same thing. And the dog would be a lot more expensive. Alderman Goodman?
In my opinion, we don't need a motion on this item, and we should move on to the next.
Well, let's get a motion.
Because, as it's already written, and as staff has explained, it already seems to meet what the council seems to prefer, which is that the owner of the machines pays their own fee for operating their business in our town.
Okay, if someone is opposed to that, make a motion, otherwise we'll move on.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. We're on. What's the next one? Yes, Alderman Davalos?
I didn't even hear what Alderman Goodman said, what exactly did we just pass on?
He said, basically, it's already set up that way in the ordinance. We don't need to, to vote on it unless we want to change it. So if there's no appetite to change it, then we can just move on, which was a good point.
And we will have time at some point to establish what that fee is, some other time or something?
The next item.
Your, your wishes are going to be realized immediately.
That would be great, my lucky day, thank you.
All right, we're on to D. How can we craft this motion? What's, currently what is in the ordinance? Initially a thousand, and every year a thousand? Okay, so, if someone is in favor of reducing the initial licensing fee, then we could have a motion for that and vote on it. If no one wants to change what's in the ordinance, we don't need a motion, we can just say, "That's fine, let's move on." Correct? Well, we can't yet, Alderman Davalos?
Well, I just think $1,000 is too much money, because I have a fear that, that the, that the businesses are going to end up maybe having to pay. And so if you look at this memorandum that was sent by staff, quite a few of these cities are saying $250 per machine. And so, it seems like if we make it to the, the owners, not the business, but the video machine owners or whatever, have to pay $6,000 if you have six machines, I can see them struggling with all of this. Now, I don't know how it works, I have no experience, I don't know what other cities, but the information that was gathered at us, the fees are usually less than $1,000. And if that's the case, it might be, if the guy's not, if the owner's not going to pay, then the business has some, you know, six times 25 is a, it's 1,500.
Okay, city administrator Coakley?
Thank you, Alderman, you're correct with the research and the data you have in front of you on the numbers. Two things, is that in, also in Kristen's research, one of the recent towns that changed, increased all of their fees, Bartlett, I believe, because of the experience that they'd had, they determined they needed a higher fee. So, at least in that regard, if one is a trend, that was to move it higher. Mayor and I were at a District 6 meeting with the county board members and mayors and managers from District 6 a few weeks ago, and when we talked about what was going on in each community, I mentioned video gaming. The consensus of the group that was there, with the advice to the mayor and I, was make those fees higher, at least $1,000, because of the experience they had in those towns. Some were in Glendale Heights, I remember being very vocal, Carroll Stream, some others. So it might not reflect where they are right now, but that was the input from the mayor and manager from those towns, which just came up.
And did they share information that they had, they struggled with the, with the video gambling machine owners to get that money? Was that an issue that came up?
If I may, one of the issues that came up that I recall was about the enforcement for when businesses or the terminal operators changed out the machines or added a machine, and just trying to keep on top of that was some degree of hassle for the communities. I think that was the biggest problem, and so it was administrative, I would say administrative and enforcement issues that were really there. And, again, I can tell you anecdotally, or what was shared with us from the folks that have it around here, was that the $1,000 fee was reasonable, and, and really what they would recommend, and they were, at least the impression I got, mayor was there as well, was they were moving towards that if they hadn't already changed or were working on it.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Goodman?
I don't know if anybody else remembers the presentation by the man from the company that owned the slot machines, when he came in, perhaps it was 2013, yes, but he gave us a 60-page report with all the money that we could be making on this, and those were some eye-popping numbers that he thought that they were going to be able to make, that he was making in other communities. The only way they can get that money is by putting machines into our businesses, and they really want to do that, so if there's anybody that's going to be hard to get money from in order to let these machines operate, it's not going to be people like him. That's my observation from having listened to this gentleman wax rhapsodic about the money to be made in gambling. Thank you.
Okay, is anyone interested in making a motion to change the ordinance as it is written in item D here? If not, we can move on. Okay, clear direction to move on? Don't ever say that was easy. We are on to E, right? So if a lower initial video gaming terminal license fee is desired, what is the consensus? Okay, so what, what is currently in the motion, in the ordinance?
I don't think we need to address this item, Mayor, because it's only, would only come into play as if we had decided to change
Gotcha.
the fee, but if we're going to leave the fee as is, we can move on.
Obviates the necessity to talk about this one.
Yes.
Well done. All right. We got two, two last things here to decide, and then we can finally put this thing to bed, hopefully. Okay. Non-food serving establishments, are they allowed to be eligible for this Class V license? Or not? What is the, do we have something in the ordinance already?
Under what? The, the current ordinance makes all liquor licensed is that allow on-premise consumption only to be eligible for the video game licensed terminal, which is why the, the movie theater liquor license class was included, because it allows on-premise consumption only. So that includes some businesses that are allowed to serve alcohol without attendant food service, including taverns and nonprofit organizations.
So again, clarify currently what the ordinance says.
The ordinance allows certain license classes, liquor license classes, that do not require food service to get video gaming.
In other words, a bar?
Correct. Or the VFW.
Or a VFW, okay.
So, the current ordinance allows video gaming in establishments that do not serve food.
Okay, so if someone would like to make that as a requirement for the license, then the motion would be that you have to serve food in order to get this license, correct? Otherwise, we're, if you're good with the fact that right now the ordinance says you don't have to serve food to get a license, then we're okay. If you'd like to change that, then we need someone to make that motion. Alderman Goodman?
Okay, I'll make a motion to require food service to apply for a Class V liquor license.
Second.
Motion and a second, okay? Any discussion of that then? Alderman Kreschel?
Yeah, the ones that are on the list are ones that don't serve food, or majority of them. VFW, Town Tap, Hotshots, right? They don't serve food, so you're, you're, you're saying you don't want to have gambling in those establishments?
I guess it comes down to the definition of serving food. Whether it's 50% of your revenue or 10% of your revenue, I would presume in the past we've used that it has to be over 50% of your revenue to be considered a, a place that serves food. I don't know if that's a policy, or... I mean, there's a difference between a restaurant that serves food and also has alcohol, and a place that serves alcohol that might have a little food to go with it.
Well, one way to do it would be to just link, to say that only, like, liquor license classes that have food service, that require food service as part of the liquor license requirements, would be eligible for the Class V license. So that would be one way to just sort of overlap this to an existing format. The other option is to create a, a secondary classic, you know, a definition for what food service is, and then overlay that onto existing, you know, an evaluation of each business, which may be difficult to administer.
I was going to say, it sounds like over the complicated way to deal with something that's fairly straightforward, which is nobody who serves food is interested in getting one of these licenses anyway. At least the list that we had, the potential list, did not include restaurants, yes?
There was, I know Marquitos, which is a Mexican restaurant by Dairy Queen, was on that list. There were three that would, I think, be classified as non-food service places, Hotshots, Town Tap, and the VFW, which, you know, sometimes they have a fish fry, or sometimes they have some food, or you can go next door and get a pizza, but they are not restaurants that have regular food service with a bar or liquor as a adjunct or part of a meal instead of just as a bar. So those are more traditional bars or taverns, or a veterans' organization that, you can have events there, but it's not a regular food service, a regular restaurant. So, if you want to break it down to the definition of that, or go with the attorney's recommendation of the regular liquor license classes, you'd be eliminating a host of places that could have that.
All right, we do have a motion and a second on the table right now to require food service to get the V license, am I correct? Okay. Alderman Wilson?
Can you clarify the VFWs of food? Would they not be eligible?
No, they're not.
They're not eligible?
No.
Okay, and so that's one person that wanted it, but can't have it, okay.
Alderman Davalos?
So this brings up the point to me of these video cafes that just might open and have gambling and, you know, beer, and that be it, and, and you would get a whole lot of them, and they have to pay their liquor licenses, I know all that. But, there's been a lot of information out there warning against this sort of thing, that it, it isn't the greatest decision to make, and it can move in areas you may not want.
Except, do recall that the Class V licenses, no one is eligible for that license unless they've been in business for a year.
Okay.
So that would, you know, someone would have to open a business, operate it for a year, and then apply for the license. They couldn't just come in and say, "I'm going to open a business, I want the license."
The, the gaming license.
Right, right. So that really slows that process down and eliminates a lot of people from doing exactly what you're afraid of, I think.
Also, food service is, is one of the considerations that would be taken into account when evaluating whether a proposed applicant operations are considered a video gaming cafe. So it wouldn't be determinative, it wouldn't be the sole consideration, but it'd be one of the things taken into account when evaluating an application. So, food service would be considered, you know, obviously it'd be another revenue stream and another aspect of your business beyond only video gaming, so it'd be something that would be taken into consideration.
So it'd be in the discerning, in the discerning process, and they could be turned down?
Right, but it wouldn't be the only consideration. Thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
There seem to be quite a few other communities that do require food service. I think the, I, I had the list in front of me a minute ago, I've lost it, this is a huge thing, but it was like Plano and Woodridge and Villa Park, and I forget what all. There was about seven listed. But, you know, if it's done in a lot of other places, I've certainly had food at the VFW. If we, if we phrase this in such a way so that the food service requirement doesn't prevent the VFW from having it, I think more people on this council would be okay with that, and I think that's something that we could do if we're directing the attorney to draft the ordinance without hashing out how she drafts it right now.
The motion, though, does say, if I have it right, that that's going to be a requirement, period. There was no addendum to that, so we have a motion on the table and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Wilson?
Should we clarify the motion? The motion that was made was to require food service to be eligible for a Class V license. And that has not been clarified as to what food service means, whether it would be only licensed, liquor license classes that require food service, or whether there'd be a... be a, a separate evaluation of what food service means only relating to Class V licenses.
So Alderman Goodman, would you like to amend your motion to something that's more to your liking?
I think the motion is fine.
Yeah.
It says, and the attorney agrees with me, that we, we're not directing her in what way to, to draft the ordinance to accomplish the goal we're trying to achieve.
This is an initial question of whether food service should be required. Further direction could be requested later as to how to do that, if the motion were to pass.
When, when she brings us back the draft, we can look at it then and see if it accomplishes what we're trying to accomplish, and I think I have quite a great deal of confidence that she can do that.
Okay, go.
What is the motion?
Yeah, what is the motion? We're having trouble hearing down here.
The motion is to, that the, the ordinance should be revised to require food service to be eligible for the Class V liquor license, which would allow video gaming. As Alderman Goodman pointed out, this is just a general requirement and not how that would be specifically drafted in the ordinance, just that food service would be a requirement.
And that needs to be defined yet, exactly what that would be, and the assumption is that by the time this ordinance comes back for your consideration, we would have a definition of food service that would not preclude the businesses that are looking for this from getting it, that we'd find some way to craft that ordinance that would tighten it up, but also allow the people that have already applied to get their licenses.
So we might be able to, like the VFW?
Right.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Somebody call my name? Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Aye, I think.
Alderman Berry?
Nay.
Alderman Chrisell?
Nay.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson? Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Again, the assumption is that the direction to staff and to our attorney is to come back with wording that will not preclude the businesses that we had initially talked about for this license from getting the license.
And that assumes they all serve food.
Right.
I'm not aware of whether that's true or not, but...
They all serve some semblance of food, yes. We'll have to determine, I guess, the definition of food.
Okay.
Yeah, I would presume it would come along, along the lines of how much revenue is coming from their food as opposed to their liquor or something. Alderman Anderson, question, comment?
I would, I, I think staff is, is looking, you know, for guidance from us, and that's why we're doing all this, so just to amplify, I voted yea. However, if we end up really having to just come up with a, a very odd definition of food, I would flip to a nay to allow those, those entities to be able to, to have the license.
Okay, point, thank you. I, I would agree with you, that we have to do this in some reasonable fashion. Okay. We still have one more? Currently, the ordinance is written such that the movie theater could get these machines? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so someone at this point would have to make a motion, I, never mind, Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to make a motion to change the movie theater liquor license so that it is not eligible for a Class B liquor license.
Second.
Okay, discussion? What, you're all done?
Second.
Now we got the second. All right, I'm not asking again for discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Ashauer? Sorry.
Repeat the motion, please.
To change the movie theater license, liquor license, so that it is not eligible for a Class V license.
Okay.
Okay, everybody got it? Clerk?
Okay. Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Nay.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hold on, we can't be done with that issue already. All right, very good. We've accomplished that tonight, well done. Thoughtful discussion, good decisions made, well done, fellow elected officials. Where are we at here on, let's see?
Item F on the...
We want to review the and file the Public Works Department FY 2022 Work Program and Decision Package Status Report, and Public Works Director Kukler has a forty-five-minute video for us at this point. Correct? You want to work tomorrow, pal? Any questions for Phil on that? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, Phil, on the I and I program, it says that the contract is still being signed. I'm a little confused since I thought we had approved a couple of those contracts back at our April meeting. So why is the contract still being signed?
This is a construction contract. The two contracts served back from April were engineering contracts, the flow monitoring and the Phase Two stuff. The Phase Three was DUCs, and I don't, actually, they may have signed the contracts since, since I prepared this for the meeting that was supposed to happen last week. So they're getting ready to, they're getting ready to start the construction of that project.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thanks, Phil. On to staff recommendation to adopt the COVID-19 mitigation plan. Can I have a motion, please? And then we can discuss it if you wish. Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation and adopt the COVID-19 mitigation plan.
Motion and second, it is in your packet. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
I didn't vote.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have nothing under unfinished business?
Alderman Davalos?
What? Oh, we missed somebody?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, good, now it's, now it's unanimous. And the city attorney now is in the unenviable position to have the last item on a long agenda. We're going to go to new business, a discussion, a continued discussion that we had earlier of Elrod Friedman's Sixteenth Annual Biennial Seminar for Illinois Local Government Officials on Friday, November 5th, 2021. John and I have already said we're going, we're going to try to get as many other people to go as we can. Anything else you'd like to add, Brooke?
No, thank you, mayor.
Well played. All right, we have no need for a closed session, we do need a motion to adjourn, however.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much. Productive meeting.
Thank you, everybody.